I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to lead the flag of the state of New Mexico in its eucentric, perfect, presidential, monumental function.
And today our invocation is by Mr. Bryan Stevens.
All right. Dear Lord, thank you for this great opportunity for this invocation today. I want to thank the Lord for all his blessings that all of us get each and every day here in Eddie County. He can give us the courage and the wisdom to always do good. Work in your honor. Please watch over all the families that will be traveling to and from for whatever holidays, celebrations they take place in. And grant extra blessings for our four retirees coming up for their new year, starting a new year of a nice place to go forward in whatever activities they feel like doing. In God's name, Jesus' name, amen.
I want what I want.
Retirement should be.
Well, you were there all.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the December 17th Eddie County Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners' Meeting. And we'll begin with the timed agenda for any public comments or announcements. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. We have a kind of a pseudo-celebration, I guess, celebration for those that have elected to retire and kind of a little sadness on those that will be still working after they retire. So we'll begin with, so we're going to have all of the commissioners come up. This is dangerous. And we've tried to remove any restraints or anything from keeping retirees. So, from Public Works, Ruben De La Rosa, 31 years, five months.
You want me to?
Yes.
Hand over here between John.
Is that a photobomb?
We'll have to get a phone in the chair.
Yeah, I have to. They would see these little fingertips.
Congratulations, Ruben, and thank you for such dedicated service. Next, again from Public Works, 30 years, five months, Mr. Richard Rodriguez.
Not today. I'm too mean today, I guess.
Congratulations, Richard. And next, from our Information Systems Group, Ms. Sharon Dodson, after 22 years, two months.
I don't know where I'm supposed to be. I'm supposed to be right over here.
We'll think about next year.
No, I need to say something. I've got some years.
No, no.
First of all, I honor you to be standing next to these four, or these three making four me. You guys are amazing. When you think about it, 91 years of experience for moving out the door. So, that's something to consider. One other thing, I've worked under 21 commissioners, four county managers. You guys have a lot that you have to be responsible for, and we appreciate it. But remember, we're also part of your group too. So come talk to us. Let's be a part of you. And for each one of you out there, take care of each other. Because in this fight, it's all that goes in that. And I'm not going to cry, so thank you. Thank you.
Sharon, do you would you like?
No.
And then, last but not least, Mr. Robert Hilton from the Facilities Group, 19 years, six months.
Thank you so much. Do we want a group photo, or do we just want to choose? What do you think?
Oh, you've got one picture.
You could get one group photo real quick and get them all together. So let's have all the retirees just meet over here in the foyer, and we'll get one more group photo with everybody.
Not the foyer, just the foyer. Foyer. It's not fancy enough to be a foyer, right?
Well, if you put a couch in it, it can't be. Right? That's like having the washing machine on the front porch.
Quiet this morning.
Think we can do an hour?
Sure. It's just a project that they've got in.
Well, they sent him a mail. And said, hey, look.
Good.
I'm getting it. Just so I can throw it. I haven't heard it first. I don't have it.
It works too that well.
Don't tell the sheriff.
Yep.
That's trouble.
That's true. Two years. Three.
We're missing one.
That's right.
You know, it's definitely five. It's always just.
Let him back.
He's getting coffee. They can do anything they want.
We don't want to add it, Timmy.
Jason's turned it in a lot.
Yes, exactly. Once again, a heartfelt thank you for the years of service provided by those four individuals. We're very grateful and appreciative of their service, and we wish them all the best in the next chapter in their lives. It's always, should be, a means to an end, and this should be the exciting end, that you now get the opportunity to do what you want, as Mr. Smith, as Mr. Stevens said this morning. So thank you. With that. You know, we can't count on the Information Services System to do the math. You had to count on your fingers and toes. Uh huh.
Wes is away.
Something about finance.
That's why she's not in finance. All right, let's be nice to the retirees. All right. But again, thank you very much. We'll then move to the trailing portion of the agenda. And item number one is to approve the commission meeting minutes from the December 3rd, 2019 meeting.
All right. Does anyone have any concerns or questions on them? No? With that, I'll look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for December 3rd, 2019.
I make a motion that we approve the commission meetings minutes for December 3rd, 2019.
Have a motion in a second?
Best motion of the year?
Save the best for the last.
Carlson. Carlson.
Oh, yes.
Wood.
Did I miss the big one?
McCutcheon. Henry.
Keep him on point, would you please? Thank you. The next item is expense approval report for November 2019.
All right. Does anyone have any questions, concerns on expense? No? With that, then we'll look for a motion to approve expense approval report for November 2019.
I said I can't.
Yeah. We were worried there for a minute when you go. Please call for the vote.
Carlson. Wood. McCutcheon. Henry.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is to approve the Safety Net Carepool Certification of Public Funds for fiscal year 2019-2020. Ms. Veronica.
Good morning. So I'm needing approval for the second quarter of the Safety Net Carepool Certification.
We don't have a question.
Seeing no questions, we'll look for a motion to approve Safety Net Carepool Certification of Public Funds for fiscal year 2019-2020.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood. McCutcheon. Henry. Yes.
And Ms. Veronica has the next item on the agenda to consider the, for approval, indigent burial.
I have one, indigent cremation burial for Denton Wood Funeral Home.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve one indigent burial to be paid to Denton Wood Funeral Home.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood. McCutcheon. Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda.
Does anyone have anything to pull?
No, sir.
With that, we'll look for the approval of the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented.
Make a motion that we approve the Resolution and Consent Agenda as presented. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood. McCutcheon. Henry.
Great, thank you. Item number five is department updates, and this is an opportunity for any of the department heads and elected officials to present updates from their groups and organizations for interaction with commissions. So we'll open that up for department updates.
Morning.
Mr. Hooper. Mr. McCroskey.
Gentlemen.
Morning.
Just wanted to give you an update. I'm going to be moving forward to you all a letter on an updated process for dealing with the workforce camps and RV parks in the county, and what we're going to begin to do after the first of the year with code enforcement and dealing with these issues.
I don't know whether you want me to go into that. I'd rather just.
So basically, the recommendation is that Mr. McCroskey starts with sending letters of non-compliance and with some details that the ordinance provides for that would allow for those that do not respond or are not making the necessary improvements to come up to compliance. That the next step would be utility disconnects, power and water, to try and, and then to get those reconnected, you have to be up to code to get them reconnected. So we'll make the notifications, put them on notice, and give them an opportunity to respond and show progress towards compliance, and we'll work with them. But if we don't hear from them, and we can't get them to respond, then the ordinance provides for that action to be taken, and we feel like that would be a step that would increase the level of compliance with those that are not compliant right now. So we'll give them the notice, we'll reach out, we'll give them the opportunity to comply and to work to compliance. Absent that, we'll take the next steps of disconnection, and the residents will have to find other accommodate, or other locations to, that are in compliance, right? So we feel like that, that step would reduce the public safety risk and ensure that folks that are owning those properties are being permitted and operating under the compliance of the ordinances and codes that we have.
And one of the main issues, we're getting complaints from the parks and the owners that are, that have done it to, I mean, they've met all the requirements and they've put in their permits, and it's costing them a little bit of extra money in order to do that. And the parks that aren't doing it, you know, it just makes it unfair competitively for the, you know, for those two differences there. Between the Environment Department coming in and seeing all of the violations that are out there with the wastewater and all that kind of thing, and also having that ordinance in place for over how long now?
Took effect January 2018.
So it's been a year. And we've gone out to all of, the code enforcement staff has gone out and talked to all of the parks. They've also given them notices, and we're just not getting them to respond back to us. And we feel like with this process that we have, we'll be able to get, hopefully get their attention so that they're coming in and talking to us and getting a plan put in place in order to permit them, so. But we've had quite a few complaints from owners that have gone through the whole process and got their parks permitted, and they're irritated because there's so many out there that are in, that haven't done it yet. So hopefully, we'll be able to get these other parks that haven't come in to come in and start the process and get them permitted, so. And Steve will give you that letter. That way, if you do get calls and complaints, you know, there's, you'll see what the processes are and are able to explain to them, you know, what the issues are and what we've been having, and how we've stepped up kind of our processes in order to get everybody compliant.
And we have the authority to do the disconnect, and utilities are on board with that?
We have spoke with, with all the relevant utilities, short of, I don't believe I've spoke with Randy Bristow at Cottonwood Water, but Otis, Malaga, Excel, CVE, all those utilities are completely on board with it, and the various, and the sundry, other water co-ops in the Colfax area are also on board with it.
I don't foresee having to do a whole bunch of them. I think once we put it out there on what's going to happen if they don't, if they don't start contacting us and starting that process, I feel like it's going to increase it to where they'll get in and start getting that process taken care of, but.
How many, so what will this apply to? How many, I know that there's a lot of people who's got three and four fifth wheels sitting on a vacant lot by their house and stuff. Does it apply to all of those, or does it have to be a certain number?
Any, any location with two or more occupied RVs on it. Two of them. Under that ordinance. We are, we're working with the Environment Department to resolve some discrepancies. And as Wes was saying, we will notify the owners, we will do our level best to notify the tenants as well, should, should it come to that point. That way, they have notification that it's a possibility, this is coming as well, and they can start the process of trying to relocate in case the owner does not meet the requirements. If, if the owner will come in and just speak with us, move the process forward, it'll eliminate the entire problem. If, one thing I wanted to add to that, if, if, one of my concerns is that we issue this, we, we end up going through a disconnect, they're immediately going to start hauling water in, they're going to put them on generators. At that point, we're just immediately going to go to a citation and into court with it as well. We're, we're not going to give any further notice. It's, we've done our due diligence, and they're, they're plainly in violation and don't care to seek compliance.
I see the biggest problem as being the sewer, obviously, and so when you start the, when you start the process of trying to get that, then obviously you can't shut sewer off. The only thing you can really do is shut off electricity, and then they can run on generators at a discounted monthly rate or something. But once you do start the process, those guys putting in the septic are six, eight months out. And so, or the approved system, so, and that's really the, that's really what's harmful to your neighbor, I guess, if you're just leaching septic out. The power and water's not a big deal, right? But the, but the septic and the waste is the problem. So what is your plan on, on that, and having them prove that they've got money down, or that they're working at it? Because they can always say, man, the guy's, the septic guy's six months out, eight months out, and it just drags on them. What's your, what's your plan for enforcing that?
From, from our end, they can apply for their permit for construction of the system. And if it's six months out, we've got the documentation that they've applied with the New Mexico Environment Department for construction of the system. Then if it is six months out, or three months out, we'll work with them. Even, even under the ordinance, we'll allow locations to pump directly from RVs, but we want to see a contract in place from a licensed and approved, New Mexico Environment Department-approved pumper, so that we know that the affluent that they're pumping off is going to a licensed disposal facility and not ending up in a bar ditch or down hole somewhere.
So are, are you creating a, so you've got, let's say, an illegal septic or whatever, let's just say, you've got 10 RVs hooked up on a standard household septic. Are you then going to say you've got to put underground holding tanks in for the intermittent time, or?
We're not. We are, we are going with whatever the New Mexico Environment Department allows. However, we are obtaining that in, in written form from the New Mexico Environment Department. If, if they'll allow them to remain on the conventional system in the interim, then we will allow that.
Okay.
Right. As long as they're communicating with us, and we know what's going on, then we're good. But unless there's a huge issue, like they're just pulling it and dumping it out on the ground. But otherwise, as long as they're coming in and communicating with us, we have a plan set up, we can document that in our system and follow up on it, then we'll be good.
A real quick, quick clarification for me. So what you're saying is, is when there's a septic issue, we are reverting back to the Environmental Department and state statute? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I need, though. Perfect.
All we have to have is a permit. We don't, we don't say yes or no on the systems that they're on. The Environment Department does. We just need for that permit, for the RV permit, we need to show that they have a permit that's been approved by the state Environment Department.
That's all I have. Anyone else? Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, folks.
Jason did that, didn't he? If I'm. Can I introduce our new secretary of community services department back here? Jenna Heft. She will be working down in the old code enforcement office in front of Jerry downstairs. She'll be receiving everything, code and for, look, you've got me focused on. Everything community services related, and then disseminating that to whoever needs to go to her department.
Welcome.
Thank you. Next. Warden Massengill.
Good morning, guys.
I wanted officially to introduce Mr. Michael Corona. He's been selected as our chief of security at the jail. He's got a long tenure with us already, 20.
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years. So I just want to bring him up and let everybody see him.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't want to give you a plaque for a while.
I was having a vision already.
Thank you, Warden. Congratulations. Mr. Burns.
Morning, Jason. Looking sharp this morning.
If you'd like me to, we can go through the project manager real quick. Thank you, ma'am. Just a few quick updates, and if we need to look at this, we can. North Department is working on Rock Daisy Blading and Shell Road. They're doing really good work in continuing their blading, and we're also going to continue to present a blading plan with our road assessment and road plan in February. The South Department is working on Haroon. That one was in dire need of some attention. So we're currently rebuilding that and maintaining that one. Out at the landfill, we continue to develop and prepare our sandpoint plan and our legal dumping plans, which we will be presenting to our solid waste committee in January. The first commission meeting in January, we'll be bringing you a resolution to formalize that committee as it's never been officially formalized, with designations from the city of Carlsbad, Artesia, and the county, to sit on that and be able to bring recommendations and support for what we continue to do at the landfill. As far as projects, we're continuing with Black River Village. We are going to be ready to bid that one here right after the first of the year. We wanted to get through the holidays before we put that one and advertised it to bid. We're anticipating that one coming in under budget, and we have a really good layout for that intersection at Old Cavern and Black River Village that we feel like will greatly improve the traffic and the flow through that intersection as we continue to improve some of these routes down through the southern part of the county. The assessment is progressing. We're looking at February, mid, end of February to present that with budget and a multi-year plan of the assessment, the road sections, and the multi-year plan that we've been working on. So with that, we'll, any questions, concerns?
How's the utilization of our, of our icon on the deal for the roads?
Of our what, sir?
The icon that we have on our website.
The reporter?
Yes.
They continue to reutilize it. We continue to get reports on a daily basis. They are, they are slowing, and they are decreasing as we continue to be out and about in addressing the concerns that are reported. So we are seeing a decrease in reports coming in, and maybe it's the holidays or the time of year, but we are seeing a decrease in reports. So, but we are staying up to date. They are updated on the website. I apologize, I didn't bring you a printed out report this morning. I can continue to do so if you'd like me to. We can look at that if you'd like.
Hey, that's fine. I just want to know that.
We are staying on top of them, and that is updated on the website for people to follow up, and we are trying to make an attempt to follow up with the people that report them and let them know that they have been corrected.
Thank you. That's the important part.
Yes, sir.
Did we get the, what was it, a core sample of something, or something?
We did. We received a report on North 26th from the engineer that showed that the subgrade on North 26th was fairly stable. There are a few sections that need some repair. The main concern we have on North 26th is it does show significant reflective cracking and rutting. and rutting. So, our recommendation for that is gonna be to completely, um, mill or process place and use that as a subgrade and then come back with an overlay of hot mix or a combination pavement on top of that, either some hot mix with a chip seal or a tom on top of it or some kind of, uh, paving on that section. And we're gonna present that to you, uh, Mr., Mr. Davis and I have talked about that one a few times and we're trying to decide where we wanna allocate some, some grant funding and, uh, and then we'll be presenting that one. I think we're gonna be able to fit that one in budget within this year, is what we're really pushing for.
Do I have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Um, the, the short session's fixing to come up, and I'm, as president of NMC, I'm gonna be spending quite a bit of time in Santa Fe. Um, thank goodness I have a, an incredible number two who can take care of everything for me at the office, uh, which gives me the latitude to, to participate in some of these activities. What I would encourage you five to do, please, and any, and the other elected officials and, and any department heads that have anything that you would like for me to focus on while I'm up there and address, um, we have a lot of controversial legislation that's gonna be, uh, presented. Um, we're, we're already looking at some of the prefiles and, and they're scary. Uh, we've got some, uh, some anti-gun legisla-, a lot of anti-gun legislation coming up. You see what's going on in, in Virginia right now. Um, we're gonna be looking at probably some stuff like that happening. Uh, also, the recreational marijuana is gonna come back, and, um, we're hearing rumor that it could, the senate might not like it, might squash that, but I don't know. So, and, and there's a whole lot more. I mean, we, we have so much going on, they're gonna pack this thing full. So, um, if you have any input for me, if you have any direct, I mean, you're, I'm your representative, and if you have anything, uh, that, that you want me to, to push forward with, uh, NMC or just personally, um, I'll, I'm, I'll be up there quite a bit. So, please let me know. Um, as far as the sheriff's office goes, uh, pretty, pretty exciting times right now. We anticipate by the end of January that we will have one opening. That's it. And there's potential to even have that filled. We, we actually have a few, uh, uncertifieds. Uh, we have one just graduate from the academy. We have a few that we're gonna be sending to the academy, um, which we normally don't have a whole lot of that. And, uh, we're real excited for these young folks to be, be coming on. So, with, with the, us swelling our ranks and, and getting fully staffed, I'm able to realize some of the, uh, the plans, the, the, the things that I've wanted to do. And back, a while back, when, when you gave me the extra, the positions for the community action team, I never was able to fill that out and actually realize the whole potential of it. So, instead of just being a traffic division, we now have two divisions within that division, and we have a violent crimes unit, which is what we need badly, because with our population rising and, uh, violent crime is, we, we're seeing an increase, and it's nothing to be alarmed about, it's, it's all population driven. And we also have to be concerned about the, the narcotics influence. So, the, the, the cat has been divided into two divisions, basically. We have a traffic division and we have a violent crimes section. And the violent crimes section is working, uh, side by side with the drug task force. And we're, um, we're, we're currently doing a, we're, we're using both sides to do operations, uh, north and south. Uh, we're currently, uh, doing some operations in northern Eddy County. There were quite a few, um, drive-by shootings going on, and it was, it, it was a concern to a lot of citizens, and so we've directed our efforts up there with our violent crimes unit, and we're having some really good success. Uh, we've put several people in jail, bad, bad people in jail. Uh, we've taken several guns off the street, and we're gonna continue to work that operation. It's called Operation Bulldog, if you'd like that. And, uh, down south, uh, we're working on, uh, and a lot, the, the, the traffic portion of our cat is, uh, working a lot of this along with, with our regular deputies and my oilfield investigator. We've been working some oilfield, uh, targeted, uh, oilfield theft, because theft is going up again, and copper is on the, theft of copper is on the rise again. So, we're working, we're targeting that now, and this is the beauty of having more deputies to, to, is we can actually be proactive instead of reactive. And that, that's the key to it, and we're doing several proactive things. I, I think, uh, you'll be really happy with them. I get, I get inundated, um, with, hey, we got a problem over here. So, a lot of times, we are still chasing our tail because it's a big county. But, um, a, and, and I've had people call me that, that you folks have directed to me, and I appreciate that because I, I do need to know if, if these folks have an issue, we need to go and address it. But, um, exciting times. The, uh, county manager and I have been speaking regularly, and we're, uh, we're gonna meet and talk about a strategy, uh, to keep people here now that we're getting them, and to, to be more effective in, in how we're operating and what we're doing and what we can provide for the county. So, again, I'm really excited. We're, uh, oh, the one part of our violent crimes unit is we are entering into a partnership with, uh, ATF. And we've always worked real closely with ATF, but we're going to actually have a, our own task force officer, which means that is a deputy of mine that is, is deputized by ATF. And ATF will also, and, and if that's working out well, which I think it will, we, I have, I'm in discussions with them about sending a full-time agent down here to help us. So, ATF is expanding, they're trying to get away from the drug issue, they, they got real involved with drugs. Well, that's DEA's bailiwick. So, they're gonna focus more on violent crime and, uh, crimes involving firearms, and I think that's a much more effective approach than trying to make, you get a background check if you're buying a gun from me. So, we're gonna attack the criminal element, and we're gonna attack it very aggressively. And I think that's gonna prove, uh, to be very effective here in Eddy County, and I hope that other counties will follow, they'll see what we're doing and seeing the effectiveness of what's going on, and will, hopefully they will, they will begin to follow suit with us. So, again, I, I appreciate everybody's support and let me know what you need from me. Uh, we're, we're, again, we're, we're just getting better and better at the sheriff's office. I'm really proud of my folks, and, and it's a direct reflection on them, uh, and, and Chief Griffith's leadership, and it's, it makes me really proud. So, that's my update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Other elected officials or department head updates? All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the trailing request consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have been asked to pull on prior, um, item A.
Okay. Anybody else? So, we'll look for, uh, motion to approve travel request consent agenda pulling item A.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Rocket. Yes. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, item A needed to be pulled because, uh, the dates are wrong, it should be July 6th through July 10th of 2020. So, Mr. Mack will be putting that on the next agenda. Unless we can.
No, you can correct that.
We can correct it, okay.
Yeah, that's.
So, we, that needs to be put on for future.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we move item A under prior to, um, future.
Second.
And change the date.
And change the date to, uh, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion a second, please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Rocket. Yes. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Item number seven, uh, emergency business. I don't believe we have any. Um, item number eight is legislative update. I think Mr. Fanning has some things to share with you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Everybody's doing good this morning? I, uh, I told manager, uh, Davis that I would try to combine everything so you wouldn't have to look at me so long. And so, give you a little bit of a, a little bit of an update. On December the 6th, I met with the BLM, uh, with Jim Stovall, who's the Pecos District Manager, and, and also with Dave Evans, who's the acting, uh, manager over at the Carlsbad Office. Uh, we, I met with them to talk about our alternative routes for our 285 project. The, uh, the BLM is being very cooperative, they're interested in working with us on that, and, uh, in that ask, at that meeting, we were asking for information on what the build-outs look like as far as APDs for future projects by the BLM that may be in areas that we need to focus our attention on our road projects. Um, uh, they are trying right now to set, we were supposed to have a meeting last week of all their, uh, managers at the BLM to talk about these projects and see what they were looking at. Unfortunately, uh, Dave Evans, who was the acting manager over there, has left. Uh, and it was kind of a surprise, but I think his wife encouraged him, because he was an acting manager, that he was still in retirement and that they had other priorities. So, that's what I was told. So, so we're in the process of getting back to, uh, setting that meeting up and being able to collect that information, and they're very, uh, excited about what we're doing, uh, and working in a partnership there with them to, to help us get these projects completed. And I'll be visiting with Jason as we get further into that, setting that meeting up and doing it. So, just wanted to give you that quick update on that. Uh, one of the things really that was a, a major item that we talked about at the last meeting, uh, when John Heaton and Wendy Austin were here from the city, was the, the tenancy bill that we all have our eyes on and we're very interested in and how we could get that accomplished and, and do our goals. In the last couple of weeks, we've had several meetings with the mayor, uh, with his staff there, also with Representative Townsend, uh, Representative Brown, and looking at new things that we could do to make this, for lack of better words, a little more palatable for everyone. Um, we did appreciate the concerns from the commission and those others that have, uh, expressed their concerns about the tenancy bill and how it was being looked at and those possibilities. So, I think we have done a great job in the last, uh, couple of weeks, working with our local delegation and others, and coming up with some ideas that might be, uh, a little more workable and still accomplish our goals. Uh, one of the things that we have done is, uh, it looks like we're going to have some type of a hybrid of the, of the lodgers tax, okay? And before everybody grabs their chest and falls over, I, I think you'll really like this, unfortunately, I'm not able to show you the bill today because it's still in, being drafted. Uh, we're scurrying and hurrying, cause we know that the legislature looks, gonna start pretty quick, and we need to get that thing filed. But, in, in the positive part of it was, as I said, meeting with Representative Brown and Representative Townsend, uh, it was part of their idea to, uh, to look at this lodgers tax and be able to hopefully amend it in some way that, uh, it will accomplish our goals, at the same time, um, keep those concerns that we had in the original tenancy bill, uh, out of that, out of that portion of it. Uh, we did, in, in doing this, uh, the, John Heaton, Wendy, uh, Mayor Janeway and myself took a trip to Santa Fe last Thursday, a very quick trip. Uh, we were fortunate there to be able to meet with legislative counsel, uh, with Pam, who is helping draft that bill, go over some of those details and get some of those worked out. Uh, she's presently drafting that legislation for us, and, uh, I, I thought we would have that today, unfortunately, we didn't, but hopefully by the end of the day, we'll see some of that. Our main goal of our meeting was to sit down with the governor, and we were very, uh, fortunate to be able, because of her busy schedule, we were able to get 15 minutes with her, her time. Uh, she was very supportive of our idea, she liked the idea that we have as far as approaching this, uh, uh, bill and the, the lodgers tax. Uh, assured us that during the session, uh, that she would be supportive. Uh, as we know, this is a budget session, it's going to be very hard to get legislation through in 30 days. Uh, if it, if it snags up in any committee, it's pretty much dead. Uh, she assured us that she would give us that support. She wants to see the draft, of course, when we get it, but the concept was, was very much favorable to her, and, and, uh, I thought it was very, uh, very admirable of her to understand our situation down here, especially with what we're facing with some of the mancamps and things like that, and she was appreciative of our idea and how we wanted to do it and, and thought it was something that, uh, that she could support and bring to the committees for us. So, that's a, that's a short, uh, uh, little synopsis of what we're doing there, maybe too long, but it was, I wanted you to know what was happening and how we're working on this, and it's been a daily thing that I've been devoting a lot of attention to, and I think it's, there's good reason for that. Uh, another thing that I was fortunate to be able to do at the end of the meeting is, is mention to the governor about our 285 alternative route project. Um, she understands our situation here, I thanked her for the money that she sent down here to us to do that project, uh, thanked her for her support. Uh, she is very, uh, interested in continuing to, um, I might have to be really politically correct here, but I think it's, it's okay, but I say she is very interested in trying to, uh, work with us down here and would like to be, uh, more present in southeast New Mexico, and, and she understands what's going on, and she wanted me to carry that message back. She appreciates what's happening down here, and, and she wants to do what she can to, to, uh, improve our relationships. And so, I thought that was very admirable. She started our meeting off with that, that comment, that she wanted to do that, and, and to let her know what she can do to do that. Um, so, as I explained to her what, what we were doing, that we would need additional funding for those alternative routes, and we'd like to have her help. Uh, I also have been in conversations with, uh, with Representative Brown, she's working very diligently on this, and, and we appreciate what she's doing in, in creating some new legislation, which some of you may or may not be aware of. Uh, sometimes I feel like I'm a little behind the curve, cause I'm new, but, but she is developing some new, uh, legislation to address those issues as far as all, getting funding for alternative routes and being very creative in some of that, and, and I've, uh, talked to her about it, and, and she's, she's there, so I'm, I'll be very excited to see, once we get that legislation completed, to be able to take it to the governor's office and, and sit down with, with them and, and go over this and look for their support. Um, one of the things I failed to mention is that, even though we had 15 minutes with the governor, uh, we were able to, uh, to have lunch with, um, and I'm sorry about the title, but Caroline, who's kinda like, she has like two chiefs of, uh, other governors only had one chief of staff, but she has two, two assistants that are helping her. And Caroline actually had lunch with us, and we had a great discussion, and, uh, very exciting to see that relationship with she and John Heaton and others there at the Capitol and, and their support. We also made a little loop around the Capitol, we're able to see some of the other legislators have to get a quick visit with John, John Arthur Smith, and, uh, visit with John about some of the ideas and some of the things going on southeast New Mexico, and, and, and I think they get it, uh, they really do. And, and they're gonna be, it's gonna be one of those things, and I echo some of the comments that Cage had, there's going to be a lot of what I refer to as junk, which should not be introduced during a, a session that's a budget session. Uh, unfortunately, some of those things become priorities, and some of those things get ahead of some of the things that really need to be done to get our junk. Uh, so, I, I plan on being there a lot, too, so I'm sure Sheriff Cage and I will, will see each other and be together, working on, on a lot of those things, but I think the main thing that we have to do during this session is, is push, push that we need money down here so we can make money for up there. And so, we'll, we'll keep doing that, keep carrying the message. Any, any questions?
Okay. That's easy. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Um, any, any legislators or elected official comments?
I wanna add one thing, and I'm sorry and I apologize. I completely forgot this, and this is gonna be of great interest to everybody. Um, the, and, and I don't know how closely people have been paying attention to the para reforms that are being suggested. Uh, the, the information that I have, that's gonna be in what came out of the, the, the para reform committee, I don't know the actual terminology for it, but what is gonna be presented to the legislature in this 30-day session, and I will tell you right now that New Mexico Counties officially opposes any increase in para contributions for employees or employers. We, we're, we're opposed to that. However, what's being presented, and it's gonna be shoved down our throats, I think, is exactly that. There, the, the proposal is that there's going to be a, an increase and it's gonna be a graduated increase over a few years. I don't know the exact numbers, but the increase is gonna be on both the county side and the employee side, which to us is unacceptable. The, the main problem with para is colas. Colas are what is killing para, because the market goes up and down and up and down, yet colas stay the same. And a lot of retirees would shoot me, I'm a retiree. A lot of retirees would shoot me for saying that, but I think, but a lot of them that I've spoken to have said, yeah, we understand. Colas should fluctuate with the market. If you have a bad market year, you get a smaller cola. If you have a good market year, you get a bigger cola. But the proposal is, is an end, there, there, there's a proposal, I think, of 175 million injection into the fund from the, the general fund, from the, the surplus. At least they're looking at doing that. I think that's, that's a really good idea. But the other is, like I said, increase for employers and employees. They're also talking about taking the cap off of what you can earn as far as a percentage. Right now, it's up to 90%. They're talking about taking that cap off completely, where you can unlimited percentage. I don't know how I feel about that, what, that's whatever. But the other part of it is, the, the suggestion is to suspend cola completely for a year and give one extra check to retirees of 2%. 2% of what their, their normal receipt would be, what they would get over the year. They take 2% of that. So there's some parts of it that, that are, that makes sense. I, a lot of us really believe that cola is the way, thing that needs to be looked at and that, that with an infusion of some money from our, our surplus. So just be aware and everybody out here, be aware that if this passes, you're gonna be paying more for, and thank, thank goodness that Eddie County pays a significant portion of the para for the employees as opposed to the city. I know my two sons at the, at the PD, they pay almost 20% of their check into para. By the time this is done, they'll be paying probably 22% into para. So that's what's going on. If you don't like it, as I don't like it, contact representatives, let them know. Let them know that you don't want that to happen, because that, that's going to happen. And it's being pushed by several people, including the Albuquerque, the Albuquerque Police Union, which we kind of got into it, I got into it with their representatives over some of that stuff. So just be aware.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other comments, elected officials or legislators? County manager comments, updates? As you see, there's a lot, a lot of things going on, certainly in preparation for the short session coming up, the end of January. And the plans are for NMC days there, 21st, 2nd and 3rd of January. And I think commission has plans on, on being visible and present there. We've had a lot of interactions with the city, Mayor Janeway, Ryan Flynn from the Moga was down, we had the opportunity to meet with him on a couple of occasions. Thank Mr. Burns and Commissioner Carlson. They did not injure or harm the Moga executive director or his assistants. They got a, they got a good, good dose of what's going on down here in, in Eddie County. So thank you for that. I've had some interaction with, with our legislators, representatives and senators, sharing our information package and soliciting feedback from them on how to shape that messaging and how we can continue forward with it. Their suggestions about points to highlight or elements to soften. Again, I think Mr. Fanning said it well. If the recognition is improving in Santa Fe, I think there's an opportunity to help, help them get some hands on and we'll, we'll focus on some of that next year after the session. Right now, we certainly want to be visible over there. So I'll, I'll leave that, we're, we're continuing to compile data about what's going on here in the county and, and how to represent that in a message for not just our local legislators, but the broader group of legislators in, in the, in the state. The different things, different projects and activities that are going on, community service, public works, facilities, fire service, so we're just continuing on pace with those. Coming towards the close of the calendar year, we still have a lot of fiscal year left. So looking forward for the remainder of that. And I think that's probably enough for me. Next item is the county commissioner comments.
As Mr. Fanning reported, there's a lot of us that have been working really hard on this tenancy tax bill, lots and lots of phone calls with legislators. I was in California, I was not able to make the trip to Santa Fe, but it was a good trip and I appreciate everybody that was able to make that. I, like Mr. Fanning, I'm ready to see that bill and see what it looks like, because I think it, it really, we have a good chance of making that happen this year. Also, there's been a lot of work between several of us here at the county, working on the alternate routes, lots of meetings, lots of phone calls on that as well. So hoping to see some, some good stuff happen with that. The mayor has put together a west bypass task force and he's asked me to chair that. So we will be having our first meeting on Wednesday at 5:30. Councilman Leo Estrada is gonna be the co-chair of that. And we've had several meetings, several of us have had several meetings with Mayor Janeway regarding their, the city's thoughts and, and how they would like to help us along with some, some private partnerships on that. As a lot of you know, my son graduated last Thursday on the president's list with honors with his associates. And he is already, will be starting work on his bachelor's in marketing and communications in January. He is gonna be doing that online, so he'll be home for this semester, which I'm really looking forward to. And then in the summer, he and his girlfriend will be moving to Portland, which is pretty far away, but I'm excited to have him home for a semester. And while he's doing his online college, he's gonna be substitute teaching for the calls bad school, so pray for him. Anyway, it's nice to have him home. But I want to wish every department, every employee, all my fellow commissioners, elected officials, happy holidays, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Everybody, please be safe and I love each and every one of you. And this year is the end of a decade and so all of you should reflect on this past decade and how you're gonna make the new decade a great one. I think it's really important to do that. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner McCutcheon.
So we've had multiple retirees today that now do whatever you want, I guess. But, you know, and looking at, looking at all the experience that we, that we've lost and looking at how steady, I mean, we had 19 and a half years to 30 and a half years or something like that. I'm, you know, I, I'm concerned with how we're gonna replace those people and, and the institutional knowledge also that goes with them, but also just the steadiness, because I don't see the, the, the rising generation as having that. But I do appreciate there are, there are some people that are, that are, that are doing quite a bit of good as far as, as trying to train the new generation. I'd like to thank the Wilsons, the Wilsons have a program they've put together for high school kids that are kind of graduating, high school kids, and now they're, they're paying them to go and learn a trade, so they'll actually take either all, either all of the hourly wages or, or percentage of those for the employer and place those kids in a, in a trade. And I think that's just absolutely wonderful. We've got a lot of people that know how to do certain things, you know? You know, and it's, it's just amazing to me that, you know, we still have people that graduate in, you know, transgender studies or something where there's no jobs in that, but you can be a plumber. And there's a lot of jobs for plumbers and electricians and, and things like that. And so I, I just would like to, I just would like to thank the Wilsons for doing that and, and trying to make a difference. And seeing people who've now graduated on to the next, to the next stage in life, I appreciate that there's some people out there trying to do something to replace those, to replace those, so.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Wood?
I also want to congratulate the ones retiring. There's a lot of years going out the door. And if you look over the past year, there's been a lot, a lot of retiring going on. But anyway, that's one part of life I recommend for everybody. As I was telling Ruben the other day, he'll enjoy it, just don't run, get involved in politics and it'll be a lot more fun. Anyway, Commissioner Henry and I met with some folks from Holly Energy, Holly Energy Partners or something like that. And I had, I got a call and had to leave in the middle of the meeting, but anyway, they're starting a, in March of next year and all the plans are, are done. But it'd be a $350 million project that will start up and building a rail system and they're gonna be refining biodiesel for the folks out in California. And the, all of the product will go to California. Apparently, they don't want anything burning out there that involves crude oil. So this, and, and this biodiesel is made out of animal fat, vegetables. I call it Willie Nelson motorhome fuel, because he kind of pushed that deal. But anyway, I, I've talked to people that have tried to burn that stuff and they say it's pretty nasty on the diesel engines, but anyway, that's what California wants and Holly Energy is getting in on the, on the ground level of this thing. We'll be selling a lot of product out of Artesia, but it's located just south of Navajo Refinery, across 82 there, they bought this farm and they showed us the blueprint. It was a pretty elaborate system. I mean, a lot of rail going in and it'll all be sent in by rail and all the product will leave by rail. So there's a lot of business gonna be going on up there. I don't know where they're gonna live, but they're steadily building some houses up there. I don't know if it'll be fast enough or not, but anyway, Commissioner Henry may have more on that since he stayed for the full meeting. But anyway, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
As Commissioner Crockett mentioned, and we had the chance to take Ryan Flynn, the executive director of Amoga, around. As he said, there was 112 rigs running in Eddie County and we saw 102 of them at some points. I think that he thought we had kidnapped him and weren't taking him back. But I think that he's also got a good taste of, of some of the problems that we're facing due to the traffic and, and the things going on out in the, in the oil field. So I think that was a, a good meeting that, that he got kind of a sample of some of the troubles that we're facing here. So I thought that was, that was really good. Like the other commissioners, I want to congratulate the people that are retiring and, and hopefully you have a good time. I know that I retired and I'm busier today than I was before, so sometimes that happens too. Also, I would like to say that, that we're kind of ending Stevens and my first year on the commission and I want to thank everybody for all the help you've given us. And we've seen a lot of changes. I think that some of them for the better and I think we've got some exciting times ahead. And so I just want to thank everybody for your support and working with us. The other thing is I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
All right, I'll make mine quick since they kind of covered it. As Commissioner Wood said, I think there's some exciting things gonna happen in Artesia. It's always good to see that, because that helps balance our economy down there and runs, whether there's oil pumping or not, it's constantly running. So that always, always is good for us. I had something to say about what you said. Oh, I remember what it was. Talking about this year, I think we've done, I think we've made huge strides this year. You see huge things happening out there and it's exciting. You know, when people are stopping you, I say it all the time, but when people are now stopping you to say, hey, things are going really great, instead of what are y'all doing, it's, it's really nice for a change. And, and I think that's the goal, is to try to win back some trust and try to win back the folks out there to say, okay, y'all have it, we're, we're in good shape. And, and, and that's, it says a lot to y'all, says a lot to everything that we're getting done. So let's keep that up, keep that message going in the new year, since this one's kind of ending. And I think we're ending on a really high note. Again, retirees, really sad to see some of them go. But it's a, it's a good thing. I doubt I'll ever get there, so let me know how it goes. Let me know how much fun it is, because if I get there, it's gonna be blind luck and we'll see about that. To those that are staying, I sure appreciate, appreciate what y'all are doing as well and thanks for staying. It's a good thing, so, so let's keep that, keep that, keep that in mind. I wanted to let everyone know if anyone, it was on Facebook yesterday, if you're not friends or haven't liked Representative Townsend's deal, he actually was at a roundtable yesterday with the president. It was very interesting to see that the president understood what was going on in New Mexico. I think he, as y'all alluded to, the, the governor sees what's happening down here. It's pretty easy to see when your bank account is just blowing through the roof, so you kind of figure out where's that money coming from. So I'm glad they recognize that it is coming from down here and I'm glad that the President of the United States recognizes the same thing. So it's kind of neat that folks all over the country are talking about Eddie County and Lee County and, and what we're doing for the country and the, the state and the citizens of New Mexico. So let's keep up the good work, let's keep the message with the session coming, we're gonna have a lot of work to do. It is a short session. As, as the sheriff said, I think there's gonna be a lot of garbage they throw at us for whatever reason, and I think I have a pretty good idea personally why I think they're throwing it at us this year, which will be exciting for the years coming. So that's about all I have. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Have a great time. Glad we did this this morning. I would like to say, as, as the last meeting as chairman, I think we kind of crushed it on time, so you're welcome. That was the goal. Some of y'all were long-winded, kind of killed my, killed my time, but hey, that's all right. Thank y'all for everything.
Thank you, commissioners, John and Henry. We don't have any executive session agenda today, and so the last item on our active agenda is adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Third.
Second.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
So, Ernie, that'll be the same time we're there for.
And we're too.
Just about, no?
Okay, pretty good.